Good to go, right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first planning committee of 2022. Happy New Year, everyone. And that's apparently the last time we're allowed to say it now because it's halfway through January. So is everybody happy with the minutes? Oh, no, I haven't said the bit about the, just to remind members of the public who may be on, you can watch this live as it's being livestreamed, but also there are recordings available later on as well. So with that, are we happy with the minutes of last time? Thank you. Any declarations of interest? councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. In respect to item number 10, I would like to claim an interest as the lead member for recreation in the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? No, in which case we're onto item three, questions, there are none. And then there's the report on potential site visits. I hand over to Julie Williams to introduce this, page 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, councillors. Yes, if you turn to page 20 of your report, there is a list of four potential applications coming to committee at some time. The only one on that list I would recommend that members should do a site visit, and it would need to be an unaccompanied site visit, is to the second one down. So that's the Reading Golf Club site, application reference 21843. As I say, that will need to be an accompanied site visit. So you'll be going onto private land to view that. So if, I'm not sure yet which committee this will be coming to. So if you can bear with me, if I can arrange that time with you. So if you look for emails coming out, but if, I'm hoping that you can agree that we should do that site visit. Thank you.
And I think we're also suggesting that it, sorry, we're also suggesting it be later on in the day to enable as many people as possible to go to that. Sometimes when it's in the middle of the morning, it eats into people's working day. Whereas if it's later on in the afternoon, before it gets dark, obviously, but it will be helpful to try and get more, more of us there.
Okay. And indeed, if that is the wish from members, that in fact, we do have that site visit, you know, throughout the year, later in the day, then, then please let us know because, you know, there's no point us scheduling it if people can't attend, so.
No, absolutely agree. Probably time was reviewed anyway. Thank you. If people are, that, I think there are one or two other suggestions from members about a further site visit. So councillor Emberson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. As the Ward councillor in Minster, I would advocate that we do go on a site visit, an unaccompanied site visit to Lesford Road, because it relates to temporary parking in relation to the 46 homes that are being built further along. So I think it's an important one. And I know that some neighbours have had some concerns in terms of making sure there's barriers, et cetera. So I think it would be valuable if we had an unaccompanied site visit there, please, Chair.
Yeah, I'd be really happy with that one as well. And councillor Lang, I saw you.
Yep, thank you, Chair. As a Witty Ward councillor, I'd like to request a site visit to 142 Wittywood Lane. It's quite a major application and I'd like to get some background on it, along with Ward councillors. Thank you.
Schedule those to be at the, the site visit before they're due to come to committee.
Yes, so just to confer for the unaccompanied site visit to Lesford Road, I'll ask the case officer to provide a briefing note for that one. I think we will be ready to bring that one to the next committee. So the first one in February, oh, second of February, I think it is. So we're trying to get that out swiftly. So you, but as I say, try and diary that in to go before then. I'm not sure yet of the direction of travel for 142 Wittywood Lane. I'll check with the case officer and get back to you all as to when that site visit should happen before it comes to committee. Thank you.
Anybody else suggest anything? Councillor Stamfordbeale.
Just quickly going back to the golf club. We have a tree officer on that visit because obviously trees are, we've got quite a lot of mature trees on that site. So I think it'd be helpful to have the tree officer actually showing us. Certainly very beneficial last time when councillor Emberson and councillor Rowland came with me on the previous site visit. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing anybody else, so if we can agree those and we'll be, we'll wait to hear exactly which site visit it will be necessary to do, the accompanied ones in particular. Thank you. Takes us on to planning appeals on page 21. Again, Julie Williams to.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So under appendix one, it says there are no appeals lodged. We have in fact had an appeal lodged since the report was produced. And that's for, we call it the Aviva site. So on the other side of Aston Road, on the SSE site, that has been requested to be a public inquiry. We're still waiting for the formal paperwork to come in for that one. But as I say, we will provide you with more information on that when we come to the next committee. On the appendix two, we've got a decision decided. The case officer for that has prepared a, a report to explain to you the decision in that case. So that will come to your next committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got any comments or questions? No, thank you very much. And then we've got the item on applications for prior approval, page 25. Julie, again, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. There's nothing to add to this report for me. Thank you.
Any comments? We note that, thank you. And then we come on to the item on page 31, item 785 to 88 Broad Street, the proposal to have a local listing here. And we have Bruce to introduce this, please.
Is there a slide with this? Okay. This has been a very interesting site. I've been looking at it for about six months and there's been a couple of pre-applications for it, which have come and gone. Councillor Page attended one of those. It's the six red windows is the middle of the site. But if you have a look at the supplementary photographs I've put in, is that available? Yep. The reason we had those was the more we looked into this site, the more significant it became. And the end result is it's the oldest group of, a row of commercial terraces in Broad Street, which dates from the 1870s. All the buildings that were built prior on left and right of it have now been upgraded in the 1880s or 1890s. So what evolved was this central group of five plots are the oldest group of buildings that, that ended the street, which is very significant. Because initially, we kept thinking, councillor Page was there. We knew it was important and it was a very simple commercial building, but couldn't put my finger on it. So that's the reason we did the extra paper, was to look at how the OS map showed it was a group of five buildings that are consistent. And it's the only type of its building of its kind in the centre of Reading. The semicircular windows on the first floor are quite unique. And the ones on the second floor with the shallow, like a Tudor arch almost, is something that, when I was talking to Evelyn Williams, I don't know of any other in Reading. I'm happy to be proved wrong, but, so it turns out to be a unique local building, very significant, and it makes an important contribution to Broad Street for its architectural character, for its historical character. It was designed by a local architect. And beyond that, there's not much to add. It's very significant.
Thank you very much for that. Has anybody got any questions or comments? Councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. And I thank Bruce Edgar for his introduction and for the work done on these sites. As an Abbey Ward councillor and also the lead member for heritage, I'm delighted to see these come forward. They, there has been a lot of research that has been done. And I think it was rather exciting to find that these are some of the oldest along Broad Street. So I think it's, I think that, that alone makes it very, very important. I think that we can all recognise that Broad Street is a very mixed bag of properties. And the heritage that we have along the route is somewhat spotty in locations. Yet through retention of, of sites like this, recognition at least of them and their value as a local listing, it's, it's really important that we can continuing in years forward, understand the Victorian retail aspect of Broad Street and how that built up. And these are a fine example of that. We're currently, you know, I think everyone's aware of the High Street Heritage Action Zone, which came in right before Covid, which looks to protect some of our radial high streets out of the town centre and including the town centre to some extent by, by accentuating the heritage that we have. That makes areas, it can make areas more attractive, more interesting to come to. And the High Street Heritage Action Zone has also appropriated a heritage area assessment, which is being done in the town centre, which is in progress right now. So playing up our importance of, of our heritage, retaining that is something that can really work in our favour as high streets face a tougher time going forward. But retains, can, can really help in retaining the attractiveness and the desire for people to want to come back into the area. So I'm happy to endorse the officer's recommendation on that myself and recommend this for local listing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to say anything or ask questions? In which case, thank you very much for the report. And can we see all those in favour of approving this? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And then we get on to planning applications to be considered this evening. And we have one member of the public wishing to speak on item 11, which is 44 College Road, Mr Peter Hayes, who many of you will remember. And I'm going to get the case officer, Connie Davis, to introduce it first. And then we'll ask Peter, who's going to speak by dialing in, to say he'll have his five minutes worth after that. Thank you. So if Connie's there.
Yes, thank you, Chair. A section 73 application has been submitted to remove condition four of planning permission 141428. The original permission was approved in 2015 and was for the retrospective conversion of a dwelling to a six-bedroom HMO. The condition prevents occupiers of the HMO being automatically entitled to a parking permit. When assessing whether a planning condition can and should be upheld, it needs to be established if the condition meets the relevant planning test, as outlined in the MPPG. In this case, the condition does not, as mentioned in paragraph 6.6 of the committee report. In summary, the element of the condition, namely the requirement of the postal address of the property and to be submitted to the head of planning, is no longer relevant, given the council already knows the address. As such, the removal of the condition is accepted. However, officers do acknowledge that the pressure for on-street parking remains and the situation has not changed since the original application was approved seven years ago. Therefore, officers need to establish whether a condition or informative would be most appropriate to include on the newly produced decision notice to prevent automatic eligibility for a parking permit. As noted in the council's residential conversions supplementary planning documents, when a dwelling is converted to a HMO, occupiers of the HMO will not automatically be entitled to a parking permit. The SPD states that this will be reminded to applicants via informatives rather than conditions. Upon consultation with the council's planning solicitor, it was considered that a condition preventing automatic entitlement to a permit would not be appropriate to include, given the wording of the SPD, and therefore only an informative relating to parking permits should be included. The parking permit team have confirmed that both conditions or informatives are satisfactory triggers for the team to not automatically issue a permit to an address. Therefore, the, the informative on the new decision notice will still prevent automatic entitlement of a permit. And so the situation surrounding eligibility will not actually be altered as a result of this application. As such, the recommendation is to grant the removal of condition four with the new decision notice reproducing all other original conditions and including a parking permit informative. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Peter Hayes to introduce himself and then we'll start the five minutes.
I hope, I hope you can all hear me.
We can hear you, thank you.
Right, thank you. And then thank you very much for letting me speak to the meeting and good evening, everybody. I want to thank first of all the officer's report as just given and, and also make some comments in relation to that in a second. But to give a bit of history to this, there are many residents who've, who've had concerns about number 44 ever since it first became the subject of an application to be changed into an HMO. Because we have a road with limited parking and lots of street houses with no off-street parking, which has always meant that it's been very difficult to park in the road for many, many people. And HMOs clearly have a tendency to increase that pressure. And at the time, the original application came in for this house to be turned into an HMO, there was an article four direction in, in place that, in the area, which meant that HMOs weren't entitled to parking. And in addition, the, the street had already been assessed for residence parking to be introduced and we were waiting for it to take place, but it was an approved scheme. This year, there have been two applications from the landlord of this property, both related to trying to secure the right to get permits for residents. The first of those was, was withdrawn earlier in, in 2020. And the second one is the one that we're looking at today. And I, I submitted objections to both. And a number of other residents submitted objections to the first one. I think one other has submitted an objection to this particular one. I think some people probably missed the fact that there were, that they had to resubmit objections if they still had them. So that's the history. The officer's report and recommendations, I think, as, as has been said, I'm pleased to be able to see that the officer's report says that the informative will make it clear that residents are not automatically entitled to a parking permit, that tenants must be notified of this, that the parking permit team will be aware of the informative and take it into account when considering an application for a permit, and that there's a recognition of the pressure on parking spaces in the road. However, the, the recommendation is that the application should be permitted, which I feel is misleading as there's no change in the right to parking permits by the residents. So I think saying the application is permitted caused perhaps more concern amongst residents than was, was maybe appropriate. But I, I think there are further points I'd like to make. Other residents, as well as me, have concerns about the removal of condition four in that it can create a precedent which could undermine council policy on residence parking schemes and HMOs. There seems to be no need to remove condition four, but I note the officer's comments in paragraph 612 that retaining a condition four could leave it open to challenge. However, I would ask, does, does removing it in this case mean that all other HMOs with similar conditions need to have the conditions removed and replaced with similar, a similar informative? There's a further point which I'd like to make, which is that I'm not aware that there's any accountability or consultation process for residents in the consideration of the award of a parking permit in an HMO, as these are not advertised in the same way as planning applications. And that must mean there's a risk of, of permits being awarded if for whatever reason the, the parking permit team decides so in, in a future occasion. I also have concerns that there may be an attempt to have the informative removed at some point in time in the future. So there are, those are three, three particular concerns that, that I have about, about this particular application. And, and that's why I felt the need to, to speak to the committee. Because I, for those reasons, I still have significant reservations about this application being approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll just check to see if anybody's got any questions for you. Any members of the committee got questions for Peter Hayes? No, I'm not seeing any hands. So thank you very much. Do stay on the line and listen to our deliberations. Thank you. Councillor Page, you were indicating.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And on behalf of the committee, can I thank Peter Hayes for his contribution? And indeed, when he contacted me some months ago, I very much shared his concerns because it is a complicated matter that he has raised and a very important one. And parking is an issue of great sensitivity and controversy in that area, as in other areas of Reading, not least when it comes to the conversion of properties, whether it be to flats or HMOs. And I think the simplest way of summarising this is to assure Peter Hayes and residents of College Road that there is no change in our council policy in the way in which we take forward the issuing of residence parking permits for this property or any other HMO. What we have here is an old condition that has been superseded by a toughening up, a tightening up in our own council policies in issuing of residence parking permits. And if I can just make it clear, apropos his last point about the transparency around issuing of residence permits to HMOs, there is no delegated power for officers of the council to issue discretionary permits to HMOs or indeed other properties, which is why they are discretionary permits and why they all have to come for consideration and approval to the traffic management subcommittee, which is represented by members. And Peter Hayes may recollect from his time. I, I don't even remember if he was on it briefly, but there are councillors on the committee and we take that responsibility very seriously. It meets again tomorrow night, coincidentally, to consider not applications from College Road that I'm aware. But unfortunately, all these matters have to be dealt with in part two because we consider matters of personal, often personal sensitivity in a way that could not be done in part one. So there is no way within the law to advertise or consult on those applications because they are essentially personal matters. But I can assure Mr Hayes and any others who are listening that the process is very robust. And the informatives that are attached to planning permissions that are granted now and as proposed in this report tonight, are automatically then translated on to a database, which is held by Parking Services and flags up all properties in the borough to which informatives have been allocated. And that then triggers the process of reports where appropriate to traffic management subcommittee. So I fully understand and sympathise with the concern of residents that this, somehow this application represented a weakening or loosening of our policies. Indeed, it is the applicant who is, I believe, has misunderstood the implications and the significance of that condition. And if he has chosen not to be here or represented this evening. But my clear message to the applicant is, you don't gain a thing from this change in the planning recommendation. The fact that it goes from a condition to an informative in no way changes the position whatsoever. And I'm therefore bemused as to why he's gone to the length and expense of pursuing a planning application that actually delivers nothing in terms of that property or the residents. Every, any resident there will still have to apply for discretionary permit and it will have to come to the traffic management subcommittee for consideration. And there is no automatic entitlement to two permits or indeed even one permit as a result of the report before us this, this evening. So the, the supplementary, the residential conversion supplementary planning document that goes back to 2013 and was about the time of this original application, but had yet to be properly worked through into the system, does make it quite clear that occupiers of houses in multiple occupation will not be entitled to on-street car parking permits. An informative will be attached to planning permissions in these cases. And that triggers then the whole process that I've just described. So I, I'm, I understand Peter Hayes' concern. Publicly and on the record, I am stating that on behalf of the council, there has been no change in our policy. Nothing will change with respect to 44 College Road or to any other HMO. And I regret the unnecessary concern that has been caused, but we have to process the application. If we didn't, then it could go to appeal, which would waste our time and officer time and would further raise local angst. So I'm recommending to the committee chair that we agree the report as amended and make it quite clear on the record that this property is not going to be treated any differently than would have been the case before this application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Josh Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I think councillor Page has covered it all. I didn't know this one was coming into committee, but councillor Page called it in and he's gone through a lot of detail there. I think there was one question that Mr Hayes had, which I'd also be interested in. We, we have before us an application to remove a condition. Is it even possible to apply to remove an informative? Or is that not even a thing that can happen? I wonder if officers could.
Do you want to respond to that, Julie? Yeah, so the list of informatives is basically just information. So it's actually, I've not heard of anyone asking for an informative to be removed because it is for information. But the point of it being there is it's links to our parking permits team. And that's, so that's how it works. I don't know quite what would happen if somebody was to challenge an informative. I would need to have some legal advice on that. But as I say, it, it doesn't carry the same, you need to apply for a system to get a condition removed. You go to an appeal to get a condition removed. Now, I've never heard of anyone having an appeal against an informative because it doesn't carry the same sort of weight in planning terms as a condition does. I also wanted to comment on the comment that Mr Hayes said about the, the fact that the whole planning permission is, seems to be reissued, that, requiring that because we're just changing a condition, why are we now permitting the change of use as described? And that's just because the function of a variation application is just that. So they, we have to reassure, it becomes a whole new planning permission. So we have to have the description as it was before, but just make clear that when they're not complying with the previous conditions. And that, that process does allow us then to also update conditions if appropriate. And so in this case, that's what we've done. We've removed the, the condition because it was found to not meet the tests at the moment. But we've then clarified that for the other conditions, to bring them up to date with current policies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. So oddly, an informative is almost stronger in this unique case than a condition because they can't apply to have it removed under any circumstances, we don't think.
I'm, I'm going to have to check into that, but I've not heard of that. I know Angela Sharma is listening in now for the legal team. I'm hope she will get in touch with us if, if she actually has heard of a case. But I haven't heard of a case where that's been challenged.
Councillor Page.
Just quickly to respond to councillor Williams. The key point to emphasise is that the administration of our parking permits is a Parking Services, Transport and Highways responsibility. It is not controlled by planning law. And therefore, whilst the, and so the control of parking permits sits out with the planning framework. And therefore, so the control of parking permits sits out with the planning framework. Even if the informative were removed, it doesn't in any way change the administration of the parking permits. The fact that the system has this property down as an HMO is what is crucial. The informative is there to ensure that the owner fulfils ideally the transparency in communicating the realities to the tenants or the prospective purchaser of the property. And that's also something that many landlords choose to ignore or deliberately mislead. And then we get applications to Traffic Management from people saying, the landlord said I was entitled to a permit, in which case we say, sorry, you're still not entitled to, take it up with the landlord. So we are pretty fireproof on this. But I fully understand the point you make, but I'm not aware in all my years of an informative ever having been challenged.
Anybody else want to comment on this one? Shall we move to the, and can I just say, I think that the key to this is the landlord being honest with tenants, and we'll see, won't we? But I hope it's reassured residents in the area that we still have the power to prevent everybody in this HMO gaining a parking permit, or indeed anybody potentially as well. So can I see all those in favour of the recommendation? That is unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you to Mr Kayes for coming along this evening. Can we then go back to the correct order of the reports now? We've had the one with public speaking, and the next one is item eight to Howard Street. And I believe Richard Etoff is going to introduce this. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Chair. This application is for the conversion and minor extension to a C3 dwelling to convert a sui generis large house in multiple occupation, or HMO, for nine persons, and conversion of the existing garage to form a bike and bin store, with the erection of two dormers to the rear, and some associated enabling internal works and some very minor external works. The main agenda report recommends the granting of planning permission, finding compliance in terms of policy principle, impact on neighbouring properties, suitable internal/external space, and internal and external space, sorry. External changes are suitable in terms of the impact on the conservation area, suitable opportunity for the storage of bins and bikes, which is away from the street scene and secure, and suitable in terms of energy. There's an update report on page eight of your update pack. This clarifies some of the figures in the discussion of HMO numbers in the area, noting that this is a rule of thumb and not the policy requirement. And the percentage of HMOs in this nearby zone is around 12%, some way short of the 25% of the concern threshold level in policy. It also includes further information on landscaping and biodiversity, which would inform the detailed wording of condition 14. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Has anybody got questions? Councillor Page?
Yeah. Can I thank Richard Etoff for his introduction? Chair, can I make it clear that this building is a large house that became vacant last year after the long-
Sorry, can I just, sorry, we're getting, I can hear you in at least duplicate over here as well. Right, sorry, I interrupted you.
This is a large property that since the former resident, the many decades left the premises, was sold last year. It's a large property, as is self-evident from looking at the plans, and clearly is suited for further residential use. Our preferences, local councils, would have been to have seen a conversion to flats rather than HMOs, but it is a property that obviously lends itself to either. And that principle is one that is fully accepted. And you will recollect, Chair, that a few months ago, we discussed the issue of basement provision in the case of the Watlington Street application. And it's that aspect that causes us some concern. And I would particularly draw colleagues' attention to page 61, and the top of that page, paragraph 6.18, which refers to the issue of layout and stacking of rooms. We have a policy about stacking, which should basically, can be summarised as having the same uses on top of each other, i.e. a bedroom over a bedroom, a living area over a living area, toilets and bathrooms over toilets and bathrooms. And there's a self-evident reason for that. And this development in terms of the basement accommodation does not deliver that. And the report makes it clear that the communal kitchen, dining and living room is actually located above two basement units, two HMO rooms, that will obviously be occupied for quite a bit of time by the residents. They will not be spending all their time in the communal area, and the communal area, dining, living, is likely to be one of the busiest in the town, in the house. And that's why we have that stacking policy. And it is a policy that was strengthened and is reflected in our recently adopted local plan. And the full sentence is on page 57, in the bullet point, there is no inappropriate stacking in terms of the conversion. I think this is a highly inappropriate proposal. It represents, in our opinion, a certain greediness on the part of the developer. Virtually every single room should be made an HMO. And in this case, we do not think, because of the implications of stacking, and also, I do not think that we as an authority, and we need to look at these on a case-by-case basis, should be sanctioning the provision of new basement HMOs that are served only by a lightwell. And this is substandard accommodation. Our policies allow for states specifically that there are no adopted standards relating specifically to basements, but a planning judgement will be made as to the suitability of the accommodation proposed. Watlington Street, we regarded as not reaching the adequate standards, and I don't regard this as either. There is a potential in some houses for a basement to open out onto a garden. In this case, there is none, either front or rear. And so, Chair, I think this is a pretty fundamental enough reason for us to refuse this application. I have to say, I'm somewhat surprised with the strength of our position on the stacking issue, that officers feel that going down the route of trying to secure additional insulation would somehow overcome that, in which case that could be applied to every floor and virtually every case, and would negate the whole purpose of the stacking policy. So, and it's not even, it's not even certain that it could be delivered. So I think if we went ahead on the basis of proving this, on the hope that a condition could be secured, I'm not even too sure whether the applicant, knowing the house, I'm not too sure that it could even be delivered without major reconstruction. But I think that's an academic point, because I think we should stick by our policy. And I therefore, Chair, propose that we refuse the application on the grounds of not complying with policy HA in terms of the stacking and the implications for those proposed basement bedrooms.
Thank you. Anybody else want to either comment on councillor Page's proposal, or?
Councillor Rowland? Yes, well, I do have to say, I would agree with my colleague on this, that this is a reasonable concern. And it does absolutely, if every stacking situation were able to be dealt with by insulation, which would be a building reg issue, I just do not see that as a reality. Otherwise, why would we have a stacking rule? So alone on that, with some other reservations that I thankfully, I thank the officer for clarifying in regards to landscaping, I would concur with councillor Page's reason and not go for the approval of this at this time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Not seeing anyone else. So we have a proposal from councillor Page to reject this application, seconded by councillor Rowland. Can I see all those in favour of rejecting this application? Thank you, that is unanimous. Which takes us on to item nine, which is the item we deferred last time on 56 Christchurch Road. And I believe Tom Hughes is going to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. As you said, this application is deferred at your December meeting for further clarification on matters including parking, litter management, and for the full wording of the recommended conditions to be provided, which is set out in your report. As set out in the May report, officers find no conflict with the identified policy, and the recommendation remains to grant planning permission. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, sorry, sometimes difficult to see anybody beyond councillor Page. Councillor McKeown?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I'm glad the decision was taken to defer last month. I really do appreciate the concerns of local residents, and hopefully, the recommendations included will give some reassurance to them, particularly around recommendation six relating to the extract duct, which states there'll be management and maintenance of the ducts, which will be made available to council officers on request. And also, the recommendation seven, I think it is, which is the cooking orders, and also, I think really importantly, recommendation seven, I'm sorry, ten, relating to the litter strategy. So I do hope that gives some reassurance to local residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to, oh, councillor Williams, you were indicating, councillor Josh Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to support the ward councillor on this, of course. I wanted to draw attention to a couple of the conditions. Condition four, the amplified music hours, seems to read that they can only have amplified music after 11 o'clock at night until 9am. So I wonder if we should check the wording on that, as it says-
Oh, yes.
It shall, well, you can read that one for yourself and check the wording. However, if I could draw attention to the hours of opening, which is condition eight, which does say that the hours of opening are 9 to 11, Monday to Saturday, 9 till 10 on Sunday and bank holidays, maybe the amplified music hours should not only be reworded to be correct, but also reworded to reflect the opening hours from condition eight. It sounds like I'm being a bit picky, and maybe I am. And so I think we should, along with the ward councillor, thank officers for producing detailed wordings on these conditions, because I think, like councillor Page mentioned last time, sometimes we get like a word or a single sentence, and the entire condition is implied from that. But it's not implied to residents, they haven't got a clue. With these detailed descriptions, they will know what is coming, they will know what this establishment can and can't do, and they will be able to hold it to account by reporting it if something goes wrong to the enforcement team. So I'm grateful for seeing those detailed wordings that I'm sure councillor Page has been working on as well. I think it's slightly regrettable we didn't get the other deferred takeaway back at the same time, so we could look at both at once. There may be additional information coming with that, that may apply to Oxford Road. I know councillor Page, again, was concerned about takeaways taking over rather than taking away, and it would have been interesting to put our minds to both at once. The local plan does specifically say we should resist the loss of retail uses, and we should restrict the provision of takeaway uses. So is there in our plan that we should resist these takeovers and these takeaways? But I think, given the, given the lack of policy against them specifically, and the removal of the A5 class, it would be very hard to refuse this. It's also surely a positive to bring an empty building back into use. So there are positive aspects to this as well. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Carnell?
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, thank you, councillor Williams. I'm glad I wasn't the only one a little confused by condition four. In response to anything is better than the current, as we see poster laden fronts, I do accept that. I do have concerns, though. Last time round, I seem to remember the parking at the rear was mentioned four spaces. Now, potentially, am I, you're looking at me as though I'm confused?
I do. I think the parking at the rear is for staff only, it's not for customers.
That then makes my concerns even greater, as the resident who, the objector who spoke last time round highlighted, the parking at the front is quite haphazard. And as I've now seen, I've passed a few times, people are parking actually onto the pavement so that the rear of their car is allowing the highway to flow. Perhaps the office could comment on that. Thank you.
Would you like to just comment on the parking?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So the parking bays along Christchurch Road in sort of the front of the parade, so they're outside of the red line, so they're actually within the highway, not under the applicant's control. So there's nothing this application can do to affect those bays on Christchurch Road. I think I put in the report to this committee, those bays of parking for up to 30 minutes at a time. Regarding the on-site parking provision, as per our parking SPD, the use that is proposed generates the same level of parking demand as the pre-existing retail use, and that is based upon the floor area of the unit in that use. In this case, the floor area is roughly 100 square metres, and the SPD requires for the use proposed, one space per 50 square metres, therefore equating to two parking spaces. So that is why in the condition, we're requiring a provision of two parking spaces. On the site plan that forms one of the approved plans, that is set out in the rear yard as a sort of a broad area allocated for parking, but the condition simply requires that the specific spaces themselves are detailed, that they can be accessed, manoeuvred into, etc. Because within that yard, there's also requirement for storage of waste and bicycle storage in that allocation as well. So the conditions seek to tie down the exact locations of those particular things within that rear yard.
Councillor Page, you-
Just to quickly, I think it would cause chaos if we were to have parking or customers potentially directed to car parking spaces at the rear of the property, whether it be two or four. The fact is, you wouldn't find out whether they were available until you'd turned into Whitley Park Lane, and then it could cause mayhem if there weren't any spaces available. Whereas the parking spaces along Christchurch Road are clearly visible, they are regularly enforced, there's a 30-minute restriction, as is spelt out in 2.2. And furthermore, there are people who live above the shops there. And I don't think residents of Whitley Park Lane, or indeed the residents who live above the shops along Christchurch Road, would take too kindly to the sort of traffic chaos that could arise if people were directed, or customers were directed, to that area. So I don't think it's desirable or practical- So I don't think it's desirable or practical to in any way encourage the use of that. I don't think many customers would even want to try for that. So I think the, the fact that there are problems of parking along Christchurch Road is, is not unique to any of the local centres. It does work better here because of the herringbone parking that, that has developed over many years. And there have been sometimes some hazardous manoeuvres. But by and large, you see a much higher turnover of spaces here by virtue of the parking restrictions and the nature of the passing trade. So given the conditions that we have, Chair, that are proposed, which are in detail, I take councillor Williams' point about the hours. I'm not too sure quite how we've arrived at that situation. It is a bit confusing, I accept. And, but nonetheless, it is clear that there are restrictions and we have a clarity here around enforcing it. I welcome the waste and litter management plan condition. This is one that I think we could usefully template to other similar and new applications in the borough. And the final point I would just make, just to emphasise the belt and braces approach, is condition six, which has lifted stuff that, a condition that, that may well come back in the near future in respect of Oxford Road. And that is the ability of our council officers, whether it be licensing or environmental health, to be able to inspect at any time the schedule of cleaning and maintenance. Licensing has that powers at the moment to go in, in terms of testing staff around the sale of alcohol to minors and to drunks and to others. And this is a similar ability for environmental health officers to be able to do those on, on the spot checks, which are essential to making sure that the standards are properly maintained. So I welcome these conditions and the detail and think that they offer some good template that we can apply elsewhere in the borough. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else. So can we, before we just deal with condition four, I just need to alter the wording, don't we, so that it's 9am to 11pm or 9am to 10pm on, so something needs to happen. But overall, there's been a very thorough process. And thank you very much to Tom for the work that's gone into this in, in the last month, because I think it does give an absolute clarity to local residents as to what they can expect in terms of these conditions. And if they are broken, then enforcement will follow on. So I hope that does give some reassurance to the local community. Can I see all those who are in favour of the recommendation subject to the alteration of condition four? Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Takes us on to item 10, the recreation ground in Shinfield Road. And David Brett, I believe, is introducing that.
Thank you, Chair. Slight, slight delay of technical difficulties, but okay. The proposed development is for the installation of a new multi-use games area at Shinfield Road Recreation Ground. The mugger features a tarmac surface and has been designed to maximise ball retention with three metre high fencing at each end, incorporating football goals and basketball hoops in the design. One metre high railings run along the length of the mugger on both sides. Access to the proposed mugger will be provided via a new path which connects to the existing path which runs through the centre of the recreation ground. No objections have been received in the response to the public consultation. The proposed development is considered to complement the existing facilities at Shinfield Road Recreation Ground, which consists of a children's play area to the north and a natural play area to the south. Your first officer recommendation is therefore to grant planning permission subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Rowland, you announced at the beginning that you'll be declaring an interest as lead councillor and won't vote on this, but you did want to say a few words before we throw it open to the rest of the committee. Thank you.
I did, and thank you, Chair. Yes, I, I think this is a really great and positive addition, hopefully, to the Shinfield Road Recreation Ground. The paper lays out that, that not only the, the parks team noted, but I would also conjecture that the ward councillors noted, that there has been a high instance of antisocial behaviour in the area, which was in part prompted, or has been in part prompted, by insufficient facilities for use within the immediate locality. So I would like to thank the councillors for their, their foresight in, in appropriating seal funding for this and thinking about their residents. And also to the parks team for setting out a mugger, as we call it, a, a play area here that is something very positive and I think will, will be very positive for the area. I know there were also concerns that residents may have had about noise, but I could hardly assure you that with the children's playground and positive play going on, I think this is the kind of noise that, that residents would find pleasant as opposed to ASB type of noise, which can sometimes, which will hopefully be thwarted by this and sometimes can be very negative. So I think this is a win win for the neighbourhood and centrally located, so I'm, I'm very happy with this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor McEwan, as ward councillor.
Thank you, Chair. As ward councillor, I'm really in favour of this application. I think it's, I really like the design, actually. I think if anybody knows this, this area, that it's, it's well used, however, you know, it's, I think it's been in need of adoptions. And councillor Rowland highlighted some of the issues that have been raised. But, you know, it's a beautiful, it's a, you know, really great park and it will really benefit from revitalisation, being revitalised. And I hope that will be enjoyed by the local communities. I'm sure it will be, and it'll be a benefit for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Which case can I see all those in favour of the recommendation? Again, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And that's, that's it, because we've dealt with item 11. Thank you very much.